One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. Ms. McDonald is excused. Please join me in a moment of silence for Arthur W. Duprah, graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. School Administrator Appreciation Day. I have a lengthy proclamation. Take a drink first. Don't read anything into that. Too late. School administrators and leaders of public schools have had a positive impact on students, staff, parents, and members of the community at large. School administrators energize students and staff, respond to student needs, empower others, and recognize and celebrate achievement. School administrators, whether they work directly in a school building or at the district level, share the common goal of providing the foundation, environment, and professional learning community in which all students can learn and learn well. School administrators are entrusted with the well-being of our community's most precious members, the children. The administrators of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Students, parents, staff, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to provide children with a five-star quality education program. To honor the administrative staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, the children, I, Michael Schuessler, President of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education, on behalf of the Board of Education, express our deepest gratitude to our administrators and proclaim November 1, 2018, as School Administrator Appreciation Day, appreciation day, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. There is a recommended board action to declare November 1, 2018, as Administrator Appreciation Day, in the North Syracuse Central School District to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities motion. Scanlon, second, Mr. Frufalia, all in favor? So declared. Thank you all for everything.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Well, thanks for planning the budget presentation on School Administrator Night. And thanks to all the administrators who stayed. That was nice of them. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Dawn Hussein. I'm the principal at the Early Education Program, and I'm also the CPSC chairperson for the district. Tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about the budget that is specific to the Early Education Program, which is a very separate process from the district budget. So, I would also just like to recognize our business office and particularly Cindy Cerio for helping to prepare this budget every year and to monitor it as the year goes by. She couldn't be here tonight with me. So, the first slide talks about the revenue sources that come into the Early Education Program. The first and really largest sum of money is the state and county aid that we receive, the tuition that comes in for both our half-day students and our full-day students, and then also our summer program. And the second component we have is the parent-paid tuition. This is for our typical or general education students. So, the parents pay tuition for them to come into the program, both in the half-day and the full-day, and in the summer session as well. We also have some other money that comes in through different types of federal grants. We receive flow-through money that comes from out-of-district students that attend our program, because we are open to all of Anadaga County. This year, we have seven different school districts that attend our program, in addition to North Syracuse students. We also receive funding through our CPSC grant, and then also for doing evaluations. I am happy to report this year, too, and neglected to mention, the state and county aid, we have received a 2% increase, again, from the state. So, that's great news. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a different slide. So, this is a summary of anticipated revenues that will be coming in for the 1819 school year. Really, this slide just shows the state and county aid and the parent-paid tuition for the total of about $5.6 million. In addition to that, we have the extra grant money. This slide represents the expenditures that we anticipate in our proposed budget for the 1819 school year, which, as you can see, the total is just over $6.1 million. It reflects about a 3% increase in expenses. This slide just shows another way to show the different expenditures in a pie chart, and just to really point out on this slide that 88% of our expenses really are direct expenses to staff that's working with students. So, overall, our condition, our financial condition is kind of highlighted here. We have gotten a 2% increase in the past four years through that state and county aid, so that's great. We're on a great path there. We have received some additional supplemental funding from Assemblyman Al Sterpi, which really helps in years where we have a deficit in our budget. We do have an adequate fund balance at this point to support a deficit. And last year, I had talked to you just a little bit about some meetings that we had had in Albany where they were discussing changing the special class reimbursement methodology. And so, we haven't really gotten any final results yet from those conversations, but we're hoping that there's some positive things that will come out of that. Some next steps for us as far as financial. The first thing I have up there is to develop a tuition assistance program. This is kind of a smaller scale of money, but we have received some money through the Optimist Club at CNS, and our own Friends Organization has set aside some money to help families that are in need, either a very immediate need or some kind of emergency situation. So, we're trying to establish right now how we'll manage that money and how we'll be able to determine what conditions would help to qualify a family that would need that support. We're also working to study different options for before and after-school. If you're familiar, we have had the YMCA program, and we have had the VASCO program with us, but due to expenses, they really weren't able to make that work in our program. But it is something that the community needs to have an extended school day. So, we're studying what other options we may have in order to be able to fill that need for families. We do always continue to look for ways to increase our revenues, specifically for our non-disabled population. We're always trying to recruit new families. We don't seem to have a problem filling the special education seats, but we really work hard to fill the general education student side of things. And then, of course, always looking for ways to increase state and county aid. Right now, we're looking at evaluation rates that haven't had an increase in several years and actually has been reduced over the years. And always exploring different grant opportunities that would be available. So, that is pretty much a quick summary of the financial situation at Main Street. And so, I'd welcome any questions, if you have any.
I have noticed on your pie chart that there wasn't one allocated for any type of security measures. I don't know if that's something that is handled that in this early statement.
So, I can speak to that, really, just as far as we don't have staff that's allocated, you know, for security. We have done some things to tighten things down at Main Street as far as having staff at the door greeting families and checking identification as they're coming in. But certainly, you know, down the road, that would be nice. We actually just had, the security cameras have been installed at Main Street as well as they've been around the rest of the district. So, that's been a nice added feature that we have offered. So, we're always looking for ways to help with that. We don't have a specific staff that's allocated.
Me first? Sure, okay. The last slide. I just wanted you to, can you tell me what the, it says initiate lobbying efforts for evaluation rates? One more. Mine looks different.
Actually, I think this version that's here seems to be cutting off the very last slide. On this line here, there's, I think there was one more thing about grants. It spoke to grant, grant opportunities? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I wonder what are evaluation rates?
It's a reimbursement that comes from the county when we do evaluations onsite, so a speech evaluation or OT evaluation. So, there's a set amount of money that's reimbursed from the county back to the program, but it actually costs much more to do the evaluation than what is being reimbursed. And like I said, that rate has been flat, I think, for my entire time, you know, for the eight years that I've been at Main Street, and actually has gradually been reduced over time rather than increased. So, but yeah, for doing initial evaluations and reevaluations for kids.
Dawn, I just wanted to ask, what methods do you use to get the word out that you have openings?
Yeah, we do a lot of different things. I think the best way that people hear about us is word of mouth, certainly, experience with friends and family that come to Main Street. We do lots of advertising through the Family Times Magazine. We try to be present at all the preschool library fairs. They have a summer camp fair that's at the state fairgrounds, so we participate in those kind of things. So, really, just continuing to put our name out. Even, like, right now, our enrollment is pretty good, but I think it's still, you know, relevant to have the community keep hearing our name so that maybe they're not looking this year for preschool, but next year, it's something that's going to trigger in their mind. So, I think our PTO is pretty active, like, on the Facebook and things like that as well, to keep, you know, getting the Main Street name out. Something exciting that is kind of in the works is we're working towards using a small portion of the money that Assemblyman Al Sterpi has offered us to increase our signage out front. Because it really, it's amazing to me, as many families as I tour in the program, they'll come in and they'll say, "I've driven by this place a million times and never knew there was a preschool here." And so, I think just continuing to educate families what early education means and, you know, showing that we're here, we've been in the community for a long time, but, yeah.
And I just want to thank you for what a great job you do, your teachers and your staff. You know, you have a soft place in my heart.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks.
Anything else?
Questions?
Dawn, thank you. Everything you do, thank you. Comments from the audience? There are none. 4A, Board Committee Reports, comments, policy, legislator?
Policy Committee, the next meeting is October 29th, and I believe we will have a new policy that will be a first reading.
Okay. Have you got the high school student member? Please, Lydia.
I know that there is someone that's going to be recommended, and I hope they'll be joining at that meeting.
Good, thanks.
Paul, anything, legislator?
Just to add that we haven't had a meeting since the last meeting of the board, but we do have one on November 13th. It is a 5:00 PM start due to an executive meeting right before. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a comment. On October 4th, Mary and I had the opportunity to go to the Anadaga Madison School Boards Association Annual Meeting. We attended with Bob Crabtree, our North Syracuse rep for BOSI's. And throughout that meeting, they gave us a lot of nice information on what they're doing advocating for education in our area. They had a keynote speaker that evening with, I'm sorry, Mark, you were there, too. They had a keynote presentation by Jody Manning and Colleen Vigiano, the Assistant Superintendent Superintendent of BOSI's, going through their CTE programs and announcing a new partnership with Lockheed Martin that was done with great help from our previous board member, so Mike Leone. So, we want to thank him for that, and I think it's going to be a great option for some of our students to go to.
Thank you, Mike.
So, just a couple of things that I think are worth celebrating. Many of you know that we do have a Chinese teacher volunteer program through Alfred University, and I met with them recently and met one of the new teachers that's come on board. I want to start by saying thank you so much to Dr. Morton, who's a retired director from our district. He has put in an incredible amount of time volunteering to be the liaison between the folks in China and Alfred University and helping to get these volunteers that work here in our two middle schools acclimated to the culture and find housing and so forth. But I'll pass this around to the board tonight. North Syracuse has a four-page feature in the Alfred 2017 Annual Report that talks about our program here, and it mentions the involvement of some of our middle school teachers and students. A pretty great program. And the numbers are growing. Voluntary for students. They do this during study hall, and we're looking at opportunities as well. So, athletics and co-curricular. Hard to believe, but we're coming towards the end of the fall season already, and we have several teams that I think we should point out. Boys soccer will be playing in the sectional quarterfinals at home this Wednesday versus Annega. Girls soccer will be playing in the quarterfinals Saturday night against RFA at Archie Stadium. And on Tuesday, the 23rd, field hockey is playing in the semifinals. The game is at Baldwinsville against RFA. And we also would like to point out that Friday evening, our football team, who remains undefeated again this year, will be playing in the quarterfinals against Annega. So, we're quickly approaching the season's end, and we wish all these teams well and hope that they do walk away with a sectional title and maybe more. And last but not least, our marching band once again remains undefeated. They placed first again this past weekend in competition. If you haven't had a chance to see them perform, it is actually breathtaking and amazing what these kids are doing. They put a lot, a lot of time into it, and their efforts and dedication really show. Congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Routine action items. 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Ed of October 1, 2018. B, consideration of classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Education. D, consideration of classification and placement of students in home instruction programs as recommended by the Home Instruction Review Committee. And E, acknowledgement of business office reports for June 2018. I will entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, D. Here's a group, Mr. Harrington, second, Ms. Grueger, Ellen Faber. Discussion action items. 6A, request to approve the corrective action plan for management letter as required by the Office of the State Comptroller. We've seen the letter from Dawn. It's attached here. Anything, Mr. Keegan, that you'd like to comment? I see you've got Vince here as well.
The guy who does all the work.
Yeah, the guy who does the work, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, it is great to have Vince, our treasurer, here, because he does, he is our chief accountant and does all the heavy lifting when it comes to getting ready for these audits. But I did want to say to the board, one thing that we are very fortunate about is that we get a lot of good constructive feedback from our auditors. We have the independent audit, the audit that you folks just accepted that was performed by Grossman-St. Amore. And we have our internal claims audit process where we have someone looking at our every payment made on behalf of the board, and we learn a lot through that process. And then, we have, you know, audits of our processes, our procedures, our internal audits done, again, reporting to the board. And so, with each of these processes, we get recommendations. So, tonight, we're talking about the recommendations made by Grossman-St. Amore, and they had three pretty good recommendations. One of the things we did, and you can probably imagine with our fund accounting, we have different funds that sometimes one fund owes another money. And it's very important that we record things in a timely fashion. And one of the things they pointed out is that as we closed the books this year, we made an adjustment later in July that we probably should have made in the first couple of days in July. And they helped us correct that. No financial issue with it, but it was, you know, the accounting could be buttoned up. And so, we thought that was a good recommendation, and we agreed with the auditors, and we will, next year, make that adjustment a little earlier in the month of July so that it hits the financial statements. Another thing that is a big trend in school accounting that the board and the audience might not be aware of is that our focus is so much on the day-to-day operations of the school and the, tracking the revenues and expenditures of the district. We don't, our process, believe it or not, doesn't yield a set of financial statements. We don't produce that final financial statement that the auditor showed you recently. And so, more and more, there's an expectation that school districts do a better job of bringing the accounting process closer and closer to that producing set of financial statements, in particular with things around the balance sheet, like our assets and liabilities. And so, we have two points here around that. They'd like us to be booking certain assets and liabilities. The second point that they mentioned was the accounting for long-term liabilities, so that things like our post-retirement health benefits, our post-retirement liabilities, pension liabilities, and accrued interest and things like that get booked before the auditors come in, not when they come in to do the audit. And so, we take that as a good comment, and we're going to work toward doing that to make sure we're a little closer to having final financial statements when the auditors come in. And then, finally, you know, in conjunction with that, it's the way we track our fixed assets. And so, we made a lot of purchases this year, particularly with the Smart Schools Bond Act. And they'd like us to make sure that we're tracking all of our assets in a manner that makes them ready for financial statements. And you may or may not know this, but we use BOSI Service for asset tracking, and it requires us to communicate all asset purchases to BOSI's in a timely fashion. And so, we need to button that process up a little bit better, which we'll be doing, again, all in an effort to make sure that we can produce financial statements a little smoother at the end of the year. So, those are the three points. Very good constructive criticism from our auditors, and we appreciate them, and we will proceed as they recommend it.
So, will this result in some new policies for the Policy Committee?
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, but I'll, Mike, do you have a?
Remember the one we talked about with Mike would be the threshold for the, what is an asset and what is not? The ways that threshold up to, what did he say?
Oh, yeah, 5,000. So, right now, that's a, it's a great conversation. And I guess we haven't really concluded on it yet, but I kind of agree with the point, which is, right now, our policy, when we call something an asset, anything, any one individual item that we spend more than $1,000 on is a trackable, is an asset, as opposed to an expenditure. Many schools have moved that number, believe it or not, to $5,000.
Or higher.
Or higher. And so, you know, I think, I think that's something we want to evaluate. And I want to also assure the board that, you know, we're tracking, we're tracking items with our asset tracking system, working with BOSI's, that are less than $1,000. But for financial statement and financial reporting purposes, our auditors are recommending that we go to this 5,000 or higher level, and if we do that, it certainly will result in a policy change.
But that shouldn't, but if that's going to be changed, it should be done soon. So, during the course of this year, you're tracking it, using the, so I will leave that up to you and.
Vince and I'll chat about that and bring something back to policy. Thank you, Mary.
Make life easier for everybody, so. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so, recommended action, approve the corrective action plan for the management letters required by the Office of the State Comptroller. Motion, Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Donafio, all in favor? B, recommendation to create a unified sports basketball team. There's a resolution here. Comments?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'd like to take about 15, 20 minutes of your time to explain a story.
We'll let Connie start the clock.
So, no. Before we go to vote on this one, I just want to take a few more minutes just to talk about this quick. I'll give you a little background for starters. I've got two children, a seventh grader that goes to Roxboro Road Middle School, and I've got a second grader at Allen Road Elementary. For the sake of this story, it bears relevance that my daughter, in second grade, has Down Syndrome. Now, normally, I wouldn't use that as a key point of this story, but I will in the case of our unified sports that we're talking about here today. You know, most people, when they talk about students with disabilities, they really think about them with a disability. We throw it around in conversation because we have to, because we designate our population by students with disabilities, and then we have our students. You know, and I'll tell people this in the past, and I'll say it now, you know, when people see her or people look at a student with a disability, I mean, they see her as a disability or with a disability, but I've always seen it as possibility. I've never looked at her, I've never once in my life saw her and thought about the disability and how that may hold her back in life. And I think that single approach is what allows me to not think in a box, you know, and not see that there's only one way this story goes. So, I'm going to tell you a couple of stories that are relevant to this right now. And one of them just happened last week, and one of them I've told a couple of people here, but it bears relevance to this story. And it's, and one of them is a personal story. And this goes back to, it's going to be a quick background here. There's an organization in this area called Gigi's Playhouse that supports individuals with Down Syndrome. And one of the things that they did probably five years ago was they created a dance program. And the dance program was administered by a local dance studio. And that dance studio then took these students or these children, there was about eight of them in total, and they put them into a dance class. And so, what they decided to do was they would put them in a dance class, and they would have each of those dancers have a buddy. So, they would have these students, they would work on their dance for the recital, and then come recital day, they would come out on the stage, and they would dance, they would dance with their buddy. Their buddy was kind of like the one that they mirrored, and their buddy was what I would call a typical peer in the eyes of what most people would know in the education system. So, you had students with a disability with their dance buddy. So, this dance would go on at every, at every one of the dances, they would do every recital, and they had always came with beforehand acknowledgement of the program, talk about the students, how wonderful it was for the community, make light of the whole situation. And my daughter was part of this dance program, too, I'll say. And after that dance program, and I told a couple of people here, at one time, I had one of my relatives come see me at work and mentioned how they saw the dance and how much fun those kids were having, and how wonderful it was they were on stage. And what I didn't tell him that day was that my daughter wasn't in that dance program. My daughter danced in a regular dance with everybody else, not with the students, not with the kids that had their dance buddy. And the reason nobody noticed that was because she looked like everybody else. She didn't have a dance buddy. She just danced. She went to her dance class, she followed the instructions, she did the dance with everybody else. The dance that they had, that they would do for those students with Down Syndrome, really mirrors what Unified Sports is. It's It's students with a disability with their partner, their buddy, or whatever they call, I shouldn't say whatever. It has a, it has a technical terminology. That name, it's the same thing. And I'll tell you, I've seen it, it was a spectacle. It was almost hard to watch because you'd watch it and you almost felt bad because those kids could do better. The difference was, nobody pushed them to do better, nobody let them do better. Which leads me to my next story. If anybody saw this past week, there's a student from Oregon University that became the first athlete with cerebral palsy that was sponsored by Nike. And he was sponsored by Nike to a three-year agreement. And in one of his interviews, somebody asked him, you know, what made him run or how he became a runner? And his answer was this, nobody told him he couldn't. And that's why he ran, because nobody told him he couldn't run. So he ran. He ran in high school, he ran in college. And we can look at this whole Unified Sports thing, and we can do whatever we want with it. And I will support the board in whatever decision they make. But I'll tell you this, this is dictated by the history and our past. And we can use our history and the past to, to learn from that, or we can make it define our future, and we can just keep on going the same way we're going with it. And if that's the way we choose to go, then that's the board's unanimous decision to do that. But I can tell you that we learn a lot from our past, and sometimes we learn to do things different in our future as a result of that. So today, I'm here to vote, whatever way everyone decides to vote, but I felt as though it was important for people to hear that there's more to this story than people think. And although my decision or my ideas may not be popular, I'm not saying them because I'm trying to be popular. I'm saying them because they're what I believe, and I believe that they are correct. That's all I got. That was less than 15 minutes.
Yeah, it was.
Not even close.
Paul, did you want, I thought, I thought you were waiting for the mic. Anybody else? Annette, did you want to comment?
So a couple of things. Mike, thank you for your story. I know that your philosophy and your beliefs are certainly behind what you share, and it was a very personal story, and we appreciate it. And recognize that that's what you believe in. We are making the recommendation for tonight, a recommendation to create this program. I know it comes after a lot of thought and discussion. I also want to comment on the fact that we're making this recommendation to add this, even though we know we still have many positions that have not been reinstated since the cuts nine and 10 years ago. Those will still be looked at in the future through the Board Budget Subcommittee as we work towards trying to reinstate things that we feel are needed. However, the recommendation for this program, Unified Sports, comes at a time where we recently received information from the State Education Department that also referenced a document and recommendation, a guidance memo from the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, requesting that we do look at providing additional opportunities for students with disabilities to participate in sports and co-curricular activities. And so I know philosophically, we have different beliefs across the table, but we are making this recommendation tonight with the hope that it is in line with our inclusive education focus with Vision 2020, and the fact that we are one of, I think, the only large school district in Section 3 that currently does not have this opportunity for our students.
Thanks, Annette. Anybody else? The motion, you can see it, it's, the North Syracuse Central School District in reviewing guidance from the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, and the New York State Education Department regarding equitable opportunities for special needs students in co-curricular and athletics program is creating a certain position and now therefore be resolved as follows. Coach, the following position, B, and hereby is created effective October 16th, head unified sports basketball coach. So the resolution is creating the coaching position, the singular coaching position for this team. So is there a motion to create this position? Scanlon, second, Mr. Marizio. All in favor? Oh, oh, I missed it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Mike, are you in favor? Okay. Okay, so it's eight, eight zero. Thanks, thank you. C, recommendation to create environmental club at Siskiyou and North Syracuse High School. E is a recommendation to abolish a security guard at the high school, which is a result of the additional SRO. E, recommendation to create an 8-1-1, 8-2-1-2-1, teaching assistant at Lakeshore Elementary School because of the enrollment needs there. And F, surplus of non-marketable equipment, where we've got whatever next links are going out the door and a bunch of other old monitors and dells.
Old computer, outdated computer.
Now, are we going to have to pay to dispose of these, Dawn?
We actually use a recycling service, so, no, we're, they track it all and make sure that everything is disposed of properly.
Good, thanks. So I will entertain a motion for six, C, D, E, and F as a group. Ms. Kruger, Mr. Thorne, all in favor? 7A, instructional personnel report. Any questions on instructional personnel? B, support staff personnel. All right, a motion to approve 7A and 7B as a group. Mr. Donafio, second. Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Motion for executive session. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the PUDM substitute bargaining unit and the North Syracuse Education Association Bargaining Unit to review one legal matter relative to potential litigation and to review the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. Motion. Mr. Harrington and Ms. Kruger, all in favor? Off we go.